Gentlemen, I'd call this meeting to order here today for our April the 10th, 2024 joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors and the School Board. Welcome everybody here today. All right, we've opened the meeting. First item on our agenda would be a discussion with the Joint School Board.
All right, okay. The School Board will enter into a closed meeting after an affirmative recorded vote in an open meeting approving a motion that identifies the subject matter, states the purpose of the meeting as authorized in subsection A of 223711 or other provision of law. And I want to change this. This is closed meeting, but we have an open meeting we're starting. Our other provision of law incites the applicable exemption from open meeting requirements provided in subsection A of 223711 or other provision of law. The School Board will reconvene in an open, will reconvene if we go in closed session, following guidelines set forth in 223712. The meeting will be open to the public using the Zoom conference calling system or in person. To join the School Board meeting using the Zoom conference calling services, the following information is needed. To join by phone, meeting ID 841-0250-3890. Zoom phone number 1-929-205-6099, or 1-301-715-8592. The meeting will now come to order. We have established a quorum. All right, I'll turn it back over to Mr. Haney.
All right, welcome y'all here today. Gentlemen, y'all ready to proceed with this meeting? And ladies? All right, our first item on the agenda would be a joint discussion with the School Board.
Thank you Chairman Haney, and thank you Madam Chair Christopher. This evening, we have some comments from our board members that we'll be sharing. In addition, our Director of Finance has some information that you requested regarding the ESAR update, as well as some special appropriations. Please know that since we are here this evening, this will be our update for the week, so we will need all questions that can help you make decisions for tomorrow's Board of Supervisors meeting.
Any other information you want to go with now?
Well, I guess we could start with the ESAR update, and I believe Mrs. Booth passed out a chart for you.
Yes ma'am.
And she'll be reviewing that.
All right, Ms. Booth.
Good evening. I included here, as we requested, the information on the SR funds. I included when the grant expires. You'll notice that the first one there, which was SR2, actually expired in September of 2023, so that is completely closed out. I included the budgeted amount, the amount of that which has already been reimbursed to the county as of today's date. And then I listed the omega amount, that means how much is remaining as of today that has not been reimbursed. There was also a question to include the amount that had been spent and reimbursed for this fiscal year. So as you can see, for the SR2, it's already closed, so we did not, we don't have any money left there. The SR3, we have $676,378.22 still remaining in SR that has not been reimbursed. It has all been spent. It has not all been reimbursed. We did have to make a, an amendment for our funds. We have already gotten verbal approval for that prior, and we're just waiting on that final approval through the system to be able to turn in the rest of those reimbursements. The ARP before and after school, that was budgeted $100,000. We've already reimbursed to the county $70,389.52. There's a remaining $29,610.48. That money is specifically going toward a before and after school Saturday school program that we are doing this year. We're hoping to use the rest of those funds for that by the end of this school year. If not, those funds can be used for the summer school program. So there is a chance that that will not be fully expended by the end of this fiscal year, but we would still be able to use that in August and September, so we would not actually lose those funds if you re-appropriated them for us for the coming school year. We've, to this date, we've spent $7,940.50. None of that has been reimbursed yet. It was such a small number that we were just going to wait till the end of the school year and reimburse for the whole thing at once. The next one is the ARP summer school. We received $139,370.93. That was for the last two summers. That has all been spent, all been reimbursed. There was nothing left for this fiscal year. And finally, the ARP unfinished learning funds. We received $576,274.94. The amount that's already been reimbursed to the county is $262,911.53. We still have $313,363.41 that has not been reimbursed. Of that, we've spent $120,616.37. And again, for the remainder, we have submitted an amendment. We are waiting for approval on that. For your knowledge, there were a few things that were in the original grant, this was written before I came, but the original grant requested some employees and positions that we were unable to fill. Therefore, we have not been able to use the funds in that way. So we have looked for things that we're already spending money on and asked for them to allow us to change how we spend those funds, so it would actually come out of something that generally would be coming out of the general fund.
Any board members having any questions?
I got one to help me understand something a little better. At the bottom of it, you got amount of money left over is $313,363.41. And you said you've spent $120,000 of that that's left over. Where's, I guess for clarification, where's the pot of money that that hundred and some thousand dollars was spent out of, since you haven't gotten a reimbursement, or you didn't get any of this upfront? I guess that's where I get confused.
Sure.
How does that process work?
So, we get a grant from the state or the government that says we've approved, because we have to say what we want to spend the money on.
Right.
And they say, we've approved you for X amount of dollars. On this particular one, it was the $576,000. Once we spend it, we're guaranteed that money. We just have to send in the documentation showing what we purchased and how we purchased it. So of this $120,000, a little over $70,000, we spent on textbooks, and that was sent out right before the break.
Okay.
So there just hasn't been a chance, and we just got back, so there hasn't been time for us to send in that reimbursement, but we will get that money back.
Right, and I understand that, and I guess why I'm confused is, they say we're going to give you $500,000, but you've got to spend $500,000 first. Where does that $500,000 come from?
It comes from the county's coffer.
Okay, so the county fronts it?
Correct.
Okay, okay. That helps me, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, any other questions? Staff, any questions? All right, thank you for that report.
May we next transition into the special appropriation requests? Mr. Chairman?
Yes ma'am, you take it as you want to go with it.
I do. I think we sent four separate appropriation requests over. One was the VDOE Grant Funded Vision Screening Program. This is something that they do annually. It was, we've already received these funds through electronic deposit on October 20th. The amount was $2,513. They have already been paid, so we just need to have you appropriate so that we can go ahead and get that negative off of that line item. There are no local funds associated with this special appropriation request. The money was, it's in and out. The money was received in October. They were paid after that.
Out of curiosity, how many, how much local funding is associated with the program?
None.
At all?
At all.
All right, what's the pleasure of the board? Does the board have any more questions first? I guess that's, could have asked it.
And this was a grant?
Yes, sir.
More questions? If not, what's the pleasure of the board? I understand it as being just a bookkeeping situation. Is that correct?
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
I say I understand that as being just a bookkeeping situation, correct?
Yes, it's going to help us remove a negative line item, which we were directed to do, and we're trying very hard. We can't do it without your approval.
All right. What was that amount again? Just refresh my memory.
$2,513.
Yeah, okay. All right. Make a motion or?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve it.
All right, I'm sorry. Have a second?
A second.
Second, do we have any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. All those against, motion passes. All right, your next item, please.
Yes, thank you. The next one I have is a change in category. In our School Board approved fiscal year 24 budget, we requested $7,859 for debt service. The only expense in that category is for our ISAEP program, which is what our students participate in to earn their GED certificate. The original invoice from the Northern Neck Tech Center that we received on June 26th was for $7,859. However, on November 1st, we received a revised invoice for $8,173.37. So we are requesting a transfer of the difference, $314.37, from instruction to debt service to cover this invoice. I attached all the supporting documentation to my request.
What was the cause for the small difference in amounts?
Just the number of students who were participating when they reallocated the funds, but resent out the cost allocation by division that was participating.
So you asked them for $314.37?
To be moved from instruction to debt service.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
All right, board have any questions? Any comments on this? If not, what's the pleasure of the board? All right, I'll make a motion that we authorize that transfer of funds. I'll second it. All right, I got a motion, a second. Got any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. All those against? All right, next item, please, ladies.
Thank you. The next item was the cafeteria fund carryover from fiscal year 23 to fiscal year 24 in the amount of $487,585.39. The school nutrition director had to complete a plan for the state, which I included in your documents. The funds would be distributed, $158,000 toward capital outlay, $275,000 toward food, and $54,585.39 toward non-food supplies. All of these funds have already been received by the county. They cannot be used for anything other than school nutrition, and none of them have any, any local taxpayer dollars.
How's the capital outlay amount determined?
In the plan that was included there, Mrs. Hamlet listed the items that she wanted to purchase. I believe everything's listed on that document. I don't remember, and I don't have it with me, I'm sorry.
Looks like you got a three-compartment seat, sink, squeeze garage, pass-through heated cabinets, couple items, walk-in freezer. That's the original freezer that you have? Yeah, I guess it's good.
Going to have a brand-new school by the time we're done?
Twenty-seven years old. Yeah, you walk-in freezer, you got something for payroll there. Selection ovens. Basically gonna give yourself, give you all self a new kitchen. All right, any board members have any other questions or comments?
Um, hold on now, I got one, but I got to think how I want to word it.
Mean you.
On the food, the $275,000, um, what's, what's normally budgeted for that now?
I don't know that off the top of my head. I'd have to go back and look at the, at the document. I know that Ms. Hamlet is, she's been purchasing local meats and vet fruits and vegetables, so the money is going, a lot of that money is going back into the community, and it's all fresh. So I know that that had an increased amount over what she had before. And because she has so many students who get lunch, she gets more money reimbursed, so she's able to continue to buy better quality items that cost more because she's getting more money in return.
So this is going to be, I guess what I'm trying to get at is, this $275,000 is an addition on what's already budgeted?
Correct.
So it won't offset any expenses?
It won't, but all of these funds are already received.
I understand, I understand.
Yes.
And I'm just looking at this, and I'm trying to ask questions that I know I'll be asked later on down the road, is that with the $275,000 coming in, why is, why wouldn't that offset some of the expenditures that you already have for the meals to operate during the year?
Well, it, it would offset some of her expenditures, but it's not, I guess I didn't answer your question correctly. It will offset her expenditures. It'll allow her to make additional purchases of more of those fresher things that she wants to order.
I'm curious as to what percentage this amount is of what was initially appropriated.
I don't think I included that in here. Her overall budget is, I believe, with this appropriation, would be about $700,000, so a little over 700.
How much money is left in the, in the, part of it as of now?
I don't know the answer to that. I'd have to look at the expenditures.
You've got X amount of dollars to cover your cafeteria fund for the entire year.
Yeah, I mean, it's the carryover funds. I, I understand what you're saying about why she, she would put that much there. I was looking to see if that number was specifically on the plan from, that was approved by the state, but it is not.
These funds have been carried over for two or three years.
Correct.
Why weren't they spent before this?
Well, I don't know that I can answer that, because I wasn't here for all that time, but I know one of the things we talked about was that if something didn't need to be replaced, and the funds were still there and could be carried over, that she could wait until she needed something.
All right, I still don't, I'm just trying to find why you need additional funding for food when the money has already appropriated, been appropriated, and the money's still there. It hasn't been spent.
I can certainly reach out to her.
I can see now if you didn't have anything left.
I can get more information for you. I'd be happy to do that.
All right, if you don't mind, get us more information on it, please.
I sure will.
All right, your next item, whenever you're ready.
Yes. The last one, I put the last three SR items together. I spoke with Mr. Tadlock and Mary the other day, and I think there's some, kind of going to go further than just talk about this, because I need to try and make it, make sense. When we ask for a special appropriation, the way the county puts that money in their system, and the way we put that money in our system, is not the same. So for instance, we were talking about how some of our lines are in the negative, and I had said that once this money was appropriated, those would not be negative anymore. But what Mary and Mr. Tadlock were explaining was that, and I am pointing at this one because it's delineated on this specific request, for instance, the SR3. It has a total, and then it says X amount of dollars would go toward instruction, and X amount of dollars would go toward capital outlay. On my budget, inside of SR3 or CARES, I have all those options as like sub-accounts. But it doesn't work like that for the county. So when they get, when we do an appropriation, if you approve, let's say the unfinished learning, that's easier, because it's all going into instruction, when the board approves that, they put it into instruction, but I put it into CARES, and then instruction under CARES. So we're, we're kind of talked about some ways that we could try and fix some things moving forward, so that it could be a clearer path. But this is the same form that I was left when I came here. We've just been using the same transmittal document. I did bring it, if you all wanted to see a copy of what it looks like. Would that be the pleasure of the board?
Yes, ma'am.
I just think it'll help make a little more sense when you see it. So every time that we do a vendor payment, funds, we fill one of these out and take it over to the treasurer's office, and they need to make sure everything matches. So you can see at the top, the first seven lines are the seven categories in our budget. Then in that first gray line, it says local, local, state, and other, fund one. So we total what the expenses are from our, the general fund. Underneath that, you can see it's the special appropriations. So when you appropriate these funds that are maybe like that vision screening grant, that would go here. Then federal funds, number three, that's money that we get from our title. Food services, fund four, but at the bottom, where it says federal cares, fund five, any of this CARES money, we keep separately, so that we know it's coming out of a different fund. We're not spending it in the general fund. So that's how it goes in RDA. But on the county side, it's broken down, not just CARES, but it's broken down by each of those top seven categories. Theirs are a little different, but basically, they have these subcategories. So we're going to, we're going to try and find a way to probably do, Mary talked about maybe doing a journal entry. We'll pull the documents that we have for the funds that have been spent for CARES, and where they've been appropriated, so that we can get it all to match. And then moving forward, we're going to try and come up with something, so that we don't have to change it later, but we're just going to have to come together, us, the treasurer's office, and talk about what we need to make it smooth moving forward. So we are doing that. And I just bring that up, because on this last request, they are broken out into different categories, like Mr. Tadlock had asked for me to tell what category the funds were spent in. So in the SR3, some of those funds would be spent in instruction, and some of those funds would be spent in capital outlay. In the unfinished learning and the before and after school, all of those funds are spent from instruction.
All right, and explain your capital outlay.
The majority of that is expenses to Connemara, from the JROTC STEM building.
All right, any other questions from the board?
I have a question, if you don't mind.
No, sorry, go ahead.
Seems like there's a disconnect, there's a river running between the finances of the School Board and Mr. Tadlock's office. What is it going to take to bridge that, other than doing journal entries? Because it seems like an awful lot of time has got to go back in and do journal entries and doing all of that stuff when we're living in 2024. And that should be a program that could be written very quickly by somebody that knows what they're doing, not me, but that we can bridge that gap, and we don't have this problem. I've noticed that in all of the previous audits that have been done, this has been something that's been brought up in every audit, and it just hasn't been addressed. And I think it's something we need to look at. I don't know who, who would look at that, but I don't think, it might be a relatively inexpensive fix that would alleviate a lot of problems, especially when you're handwriting journal entries, and you have the ability to make, you know, human error.
I think that we have a pretty good idea. We can fix it. We just need to all get together and talk about it, but I don't think it will be super difficult. If we come together and find out that's wrong, we come back to the table, but I think on my sheet, if Mary could do, she could do, I can get her information, she can do some bulk journal entries, like for each of the different categories, and then I can just adjust this form, so that under federal CARES, I then break it into the seven categories, and RDA will pull that for me, so then I could add it in there, and then it would be really clear what needed to go to instruction for the county, and, and where it was landing for us.
Just one other thing, I just want to make sure Mr. Williams' question was never answered. Can we make sure we get that percentage number to Mr. Williams?
Yes.
So that doesn't go unanswered. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just to follow up on the question, really, that is not through my office, that's through the treasurer's office, where the reconciliation is occurring.
I stand corrected.
So, no, no, that's all right. So what we have done, we, we are trying to bring the school division, the treasurer's office, and my office, and we've also talked to the auditor regarding this particular instance. But what we've also done, Ms. Dotson has reached out to RDA and some other localities, and there is a bridging, a bridge that can be done between the treasurer's office and the School Board office. Excuse me. We have provided that information to the treasurer's office. So it kind of lies with them at this point, as far as being able to see those, those records.
I need to talk to bits, a software program upgrade. Be able to use that as well?
We're on separate systems. That would be, typically, I don't know that the county and the, the school divisions are on the same system. They are kept separate. We are using the same system, so if we were to change at this point, that bridging system would not, would not be available.
So in other counties, are the schools separate from the county?
I believe so, yeah.
I guess that's how we've been doing it for the past.
I guess that's how we've been doing it for 30 years. It's the right way of doing it. I just, I don't understand when counties and schools and all implement software programs, why they don't implement programs that can be shared and easily used between the schools and the counties and you set yourself up for failure when you got two different programs and you expect information to go from one to the other. It's not a good way of doing business.
Is there a reason that they're not on the same system?
Well, like Ms. Dotson said, they, they use different modules than what we use. And, and there again, we are both using the RDA system. So there is a, a bridging component that some other localities are using. So there's an opportunity there to, for each of the systems to talk to one another for that reconciliation process. If we go to a different system, that we're cutting that, that bridge out of, out of view.
All right, any more questions or any more comments, Ms. Booth?
Did you, I think you had a motion or you were looking for a motion. I do have some other things I wanted to address, but I don't know if we're finished with that.
Comments on this or not?
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
And I'll ask my board if they have any comments. Comments, questions, whatever. Pleasure to board.
More information?
School nutrition.
Yeah. Cafeteria. Food nutrition, I'm not quite sure, but it is here. I'm, I'm not avoiding you, I'm just going back through this again. All right, does the board have any comments, questions or is the board ready to make a decision?
If these amounts are appropriated, that, that will exhaust all the monies in the, that have been appropriated for the S R three?
That is correct. We're hoping to have it all finished, all spent by the, by June 30th. We have until September 30th, but we would like to have it done by June 30th and done.
Looks like you're asking for 583,000 and change going into the instruction category, I guess. Instruction line item, 6100.
Yes, sir.
And J R O T gets 582. Then you got instruction getting another 313 and another 29,000 and change.
Yes, sir. These funds, the unfinished learning and the before and after school, those are additional funds that the state is providing, still trying to recover from COVID loss.
All right, and as of now, how, how is your standing of funds in your instructional category? Are you over budget, under budget?
I think right now we're on track.
You're on track. So you're not going to be overspent by the end of the year, which is getting very close.
Everything looks good at this time. There's, there, the only concern is fuel for transportation, but that seems to be.
Yeah, I can understand fuel fluctuating, yeah. Yeah, fuel, diesel fuel, LP, right on down the line.
What would happen to that money if it was not appropriated?
I think if money is not appropriated by September, it'll go back to the feds. We'll get that money back.
You have to reimburse by September 30th, 2024. It's really not something you want to wait until September to do because any school division who hasn't made a timely reimbursement, they're really flooding the Department of Ed with reimbursement requests and that's the reason we'd like to get these done earlier than the due date. You can understand that.
Yeah, I understand that, yeah.
I do think the appropriation has to be before the end of the fiscal year, though. I think it has to be before June 30th.
Okay.
I thought the J R O T C billment had was paid for.
It, it has been paid for.
This is just a reimbursement.
But some of the payments happened after June 30th, so they came into this fiscal year because they didn't finish.
So there's over 600,000 going into instruction fund.
Oh, he's still crunching these numbers. After I'm talking, I'll ask a question.
Go ahead.
Your Saturday school program, what does, what does that consist of?
The students come to Saturday school in the morning and they receive targeted instruction in any subject matter where they're having difficulty. It's intended to help with learning loss that was experienced during the pandemic.
What grades is that?
We originally started at the middle and high. We saw such great success that we actually started offering it at the elementary school as well.
Is the date, the hours of instruction basically about the same as a regular school day?
It's only in the morning. It's about four hours.
And that four hours, how much is actually dedicated to instruction?
We hope that, we view it as four hours of instruction. Something I didn't mention is if a student is having attendance issues, we can also use Saturday school as a, an intervention to count towards seat hours as well.
Are they getting any meals with this?
Yes, we do provide meals. Our students do eat free of charge.
Do they get any recess time?
If it's appropriate, yes.
So between recess time and meals, how much instruction would you say they're getting?
I'd have to get with the principals and then follow up with you, Mr. Fisher.
What would make a child who was, needed to make up for absentees and what would make a child come to school on a Saturday when they wouldn't come Monday through Friday?
Well, oftentimes we have attendance plans, so hopefully parents are supportive about making up that time. Our students also, for the higher grades, have to earn locally verified credits. So in order to earn their locally verified credit, that, that would be an incentive. In addition, if a child is having extreme attendance challenges, we will do a chins through the court system and they can be ordered to attend school.
How much school bus time is, is it about the same as a regular school day or less? Buses on the road time?
Well, our buses go where the children live, so there aren't as many students who come to Saturday school. So it could be a quicker run.
So the routes may, may be, but not necessarily shorter.
I would say that there will be fewer buses going to pick up the children. Not, you know, we're not going to send the whole fleet out because it's a targeted, smaller group of students who are coming to Saturday school.
How many students do you usually have attending, average?
It depends, but you know, 20 or under. And we, we really, weekly, as I think I've shared with you, we're tracking attendance, we're looking at grades. We have those weekly progress meetings in every single school. So we're really looking to put that intervention in place as soon as it's needed and not wait till the end of a marking period or the end of a semester to recover that time.
I heard about this. I've seen a little fellow that was having a, a pretty good conversation with his mom in one of the local stores about a week ago about going to school on Saturdays and I don't think he won.
The elementary children, it was surprising, they actually, the elementary kids enjoyed it and the elementary principal said, but you know, she was surprised the kids are excited to come to Saturday school. So it probably definitely varies by the child and also by age level.
How do you involve the parents when it comes to attendance? Do you have many meetings with them or?
We, you know, we handle it in many different ways. Of course, we would love to have in-person meetings every time, but sometimes a parent's work schedule cannot accommodate that. So we, we can, you know, conference over the phone, come up with a plan that we decide together and then we put that plan in motion. It's really to benefit our students. We have very supportive parents and guardians. Northumberland is a special place, so we appreciate that support from our families.
You said less than 20 show up. That sounds like a crafty way of saying the number's very small.
It's smaller. And again, with, I, I'm following up with Mr. Fisher, so I can bring you some exact numbers.
Do you, do you look at this as an experimental thing?
That's a great question. We have these unfinished learning funds where we, there are certain parameters where you can use these funds. So right now it's definitely hinged with COVID-19 funding. I'm not so sure, once we spend all of our, all of these extra monies that came in as a result of the pandemic, there, there will not necessarily be local dollars to support a Saturday school program.
Well, if you can do something to help the students, that's, that's wonderful. And I hope that what you do on Saturday may follow through to help during the week also.
Yes, absolutely.
I, I know you have meetings with other superintendents.
Yes, sir.
I'm sure there's some, you bring this up.
Yes, sir, absolutely. The other thing I failed to mention is Saturday school for the older students, there are plans that if you come to school when you, during the week, when you're supposed to be there, Monday through Friday, students work toward that so they can avoid the Saturday school situation. So there are many ways to approach that.
Has that program been funded totally by free money since it's existed?
Yes, I believe so. Tara, can you confirm that?
As long as I've been here, yes.
Also, my question is, what happens when the free money runs out, then where will the money come from?
It's possible that we may not have Saturday school. We'll have to really look at the budget allocation and then see where we are within our instructional line, transportation, et cetera. So, Mr. Chairman, we do have that request. That's the last appropriation request. I wasn't sure how you would like to move forward with that.
What was that last part? I lost you on that.
The special, this is our final special appropriation request for this evening?
Yes, ma'am. Okay. All right. The board have, board ready to make a decision?
The only reason I see that we should not appropriate it is that if it was going to cause us to spend money later down the road that we did want to spend, it's free money, and although I'm not one to spend money just because it's there, if we don't spend this money, it's going to be lost.
Well, that is true.
That's correct.
All right, so what's the pleasure of the board then? I move that, I'd like to make a motion that we appropriate this money to the school board. So your motion would be 1,165,745.24. Is that correct, Ms. Long? That's a dollar amount.
I don't think you heard.
Do you hear me, Ms. Long? Do you hear me?
No.
Oh, your dollar amount in your motion would be 1,165,745.24. And that would be broken down into instruction of 583 dollars, pardon me, 583,031.24. Then capital outlay would be 582,714. I'm just trying to amend your motion as always. You all right with that?
Right.
Ms. Chairman, I think that that's a different amount there.
It is a different amount?
Yes, sir. The unfinished learning and the before and after school are in addition to the S R three. It's three separate cares funds. So it would be the total of the 1,165,745.24, the 313, 363.41 and the 29, 610.48.
Plus the others. I didn't, hadn't done the math on the other two yet. I was just reading the S R funds right there. All right. All right, so that's your motion, Mr. Long?
Yes.
All right, do I have second on to it?
I'll second it.
All right, I got a motion and a second. Do I have any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against?
Aye.
Aye.
I think that was a three to two vote. Am I correct?
I voted in favor.
I voted against.
You voted against?
She's against.
So it's a three to two, three to two motion against. Let us have more time. We're gonna look.
So the motion's fair.
Okay, sorry, ladies.
Will you let me know if you need further information on that?
Yes, certainly will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question to the board?
Yes.
Would you be more inclined to appropriate the money if it did not include the before and after school amount?
Yeah, I would.
Let's discuss it later.
Okay.
And then we can come up with answers. We have a meeting tomorrow, too.
Could I ask who voted against because you both said aye at each time instead of nay? So I'm confused on who voted against appropriation.
Three of us voted against it.
Okay, so that, you did too?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't hear you say, okay.
Yeah, I voted against.
Thank you for the clarification.
All right. All right, let us have more time. All right, anything else, ladies?
Can we get, we're going to revisit this. Let's get the breakdown of the categories that this is going in and what's left in those categories now. Let's get all of that information.
Let's get, all right, while we got them here, let's just lay it out to them exactly, exactly what we're looking for then.
I don't want to send something later.
So they don't have to email back and forth.
See what's, what's been spent in each one of those categories.
Is that all right, Ms. Booth?
It is, but I, I think that that answer is on that chart that I gave you.
Unless I'm unclear.
Thank you, Tom, with the categories of instruction fund and everything.
Yes.
Okay, so under the CARES, you would like it broken down?
Yeah. In what category, which of your seven categories are these funds going to go into and how much?
Yes, sir, thank you.
What's left in each one of those, please?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
That's what we're looking for right there. All right. Anything else, ladies?
I do. I just had a couple of things. I watched one of the previous recordings of one of your meetings and there were some questions that came up that I wanted to have an opportunity to address.
Yes, ma'am.
One of the items that was discussed was about the auditor's report that stated that the reconciliations were still an issue. And that is correct for that report. But what I would like to remind you of is that that report was for the 2022-2023 school year. So, I did not come until November of 2022. So, the reconciliations were not done prior to my being here. Then I got here, I did work with the treasurer. We did come up with, we were able to work through everything. We saw where everything needed to be, everything was fine. The only thing we did not do was neither of us went back and did journal entries for that information. I didn't know that we needed to do that, that didn't happen. So, since, since we started meeting, I still, was still meeting with the treasurer when Ms. Kirby was here through December. I've been meeting with the new treasurer since January and we're still doing the reconciliations. We're making the journal entries as appropriate. So, it is being done, it is being done correct. But unfortunately, because it wasn't done prior to me being here, that audit report, those first months, it wasn't right. So, that's what you were told. But, Mr. Brand, I know that you were upset because it still wasn't being corrected. But I want to assure you, and you can check with Mr. Tadlock and you can check with Mrs. King, we have been doing reconciliations, they are reconciling. We're doing journal entries on both sides where things need to be adjusted. It is happening, it is, it is reconciling, and we're in a good place with that.
How about, as far as the invoices, the duplication of invoices? And, I know, I want to choose my wording because I don't want to word it differently than what the audit read. Lack of invoices? Or lack of a better term?
Again, that was, that happened before I was here. There are a lot of things that have changed. We've made a lot of improvements. We have a brand-new finance team and we've made tremendous strides. And I want to assure you that we have the county's best interest and we are in a good place and we're getting in a better place every day.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
I'm just curious, I came into this game in January, so I'm a little behind the eight ball. But is there a need to go back and do the journal entries for the span that they weren't corrected?
For fiscal year '23?
Yes, so we can identify to make sure that all the funds are flowing properly. I'm just asking.
Here's the problem with that. Anytime that you go back to a previous year that's already been closed out and you change the numbers?
I'm not talking about changing numbers.
Well, journal entries are going to change things. And audits have been done on that, on that year that's closed out. I don't know if that would be.
But they did make entries, right?
Well, it would change the categories, though. It would, I don't think that there's any.
It's not going to change the bottom line.
It's not going to change the bottom line.
But it's going to change the categories and we can identify where that money went.
Well, we're doing that now for '24.
But I'm talking about when we didn't do it.
It may be a question to ask the auditor what the best practice is and what their recommendation would be since that's closed at this point. Mary's Nightingale. We can do that tomorrow in the first thing.
I'm not, I'm not asking whether or not, I'm asking whether or not it needs to be done so that we can assure that we're, we've done everything that we're supposed to do properly.
I think with this budget, we're doing that. I don't know.
And I believe that.
I don't know what benefit.
I'm worried about what was happened before and whether or not it was done correctly.
All right, are you up to date on your reconciliation?
So, I just got the March information from Pam, from Gail, excuse me. So, I have not done that yet, but I'll have it done before the board meeting on Monday. I always have them done before the school board meetings. And then I did meet with her and there were a couple of journal entries she needed to do and then she needed to send me new reports. And then I just have to update her information and that'll be straight. Like, we've already met, we've talked about it. There were some things that she had in different categories. She's making those changes. I'm just waiting for her to send me those corrected documents and then we'll be straight. Yes, we are. They don't get their bank statements until the middle of the month, so, like, the March statement doesn't come out till the middle of April. So, we're always a little bit behind.
I understand that.
My second thing that I wanted to address, and, Mr. Brand, you just brought it up again. So, there was a comment about changing the numbers for a year that's been closed out. And I've been trying to figure out what you might have been referring to. The only thing I could think of was maybe on the recapitulation documents. And so, when we, when we originally turn in our budget request after the school board has approved it and we share that with you all, that's for what we're requesting at the time. So, if you remember last year, our original budget was asking for, I think, $10 million more. Not, not $10 million more, 10% more. And then that was not, that was not approved, that's not what was appropriated. We never did a new recapitulation document because we just do that when we submit the original budget to you. Then, once you gave us our appropriation, I was directed by the board on where to make changes. We did that, we moved forward. So, when I did the recapitulation for this year, I did correct the document for what the numbers said for last year because I put in what was actually appropriated, not what was requested. The other thing that happened was the numbers that had been put into the system prior to my being here for the fiscal '22-23 school year, in the categories, I believe only one of those categories had the correct number. The other categories had the wrong number. So, when we went back and I had communicated with Mr. Tadlock, saw that that was an issue, made the corrections. But that also made some of the numbers change because the numbers were not correctly, correctly in the RDA system.
Okay, so, I guess my thing of it is, so the changes were done after the closeout and after the audit.
But the numbers were just on that document saying what, what we were appropriated for last year. So, that didn't change. Just that document is showing you what actually was appropriated in the past and then what was being requested for the future. So, each year, those previous, that previous column is going to change because it's going to go from what was requested to what was approved unless you appropriate and approve the budget as presented. Then it would stay the same.
And I'll just look at it like, once a year is closed out and the audit is done and is completed, then that's, that's solid. That should be left alone.
Those numbers should match the audit, though. If you, if you.
So, how is that documented? If you go back and you realign your numbers to what the auditors?
I didn't realign them to what the auditor said. I realigned them to what we were appropriated.
Okay, but, okay.
If you, if you can pull the documents, the specific documents you're talking about, I'm more than happy to sit down and look at it. Maybe this isn't what you were talking about, it was something else. But I'd be happy to sit down and look at it and answer any questions you have.
And during the audit, when this came to Mrs. Booth's attention, she reached out to the auditor just to ask about it. So, he's well aware of what was happening.
Any more questions, Mr. Brand?
No.
Anything on board members having?
You know, if you don't ask questions, you don't get.
That's right, you got to ask a question.
Ask questions.
Mr. Chairman, that's our information for this evening. I do believe our school board has some information that they would like to share.
All right.
I'd like to start. There's been some consternation, questions, concerns in the public, in the community regarding our policy regarding terminal pay for unused sick leave. I'd like to read in the record the actual policy. It started, this was adopted in December 1983, the initial issue. It was then revised in 1988, 2009, 2012, 2015, and 2023. The policy itself states, "The Northumberland County School Board will pay qualified employees at retirement for accumulated unused sick leave at a rate established by the board. The employee must satisfy the following conditions to qualify. One, provide the superintendent with written notice of retirement prior to March 15th of the year retiring. Requests for exceptions may be made to the board in emergency situations. Two, be eligible for full V S R S retirement benefits in accordance with established age and experience requirements. Three, have worked a minimum of five years immediately prior to retirement in the Northumberland County Public Schools. Payment will be made at a rate of $55 per D M, not to exceed 210 days. Payment will be made on or before the last working day in July following retirement. Payment will not be made posthumously." Say that word correctly.
That was right.
Posthumously.
Posthumously. I was like, it didn't come out exactly right.
I'm glad she had a say.
But I wanted to just make sure that everybody is aware that this wasn't something new that this board started or did, that this policy has been in place since 1983. The only, the only thing that was done is with the times, the pay has increased and some other board members have history regarding how they came up with the amount. So, I wanted to read for the record what the policy said and to let the community know that this has been in place for a long time. Okay?
All right, I'll follow up on why we increased it last year to $55 a day as opposed to $40 a day. The reason is, we were paying a substitute before $80 a day. And it got so last year before we couldn't give substitutes, not enough money for them. So, then we did, we upped the substitutes' pay to $110 a day. And then, as before, as had been put in, I don't know who given years ago, that half of the substitutes' pay would go toward the person retiring because we wanted to keep them in the classroom, we don't want to burn the dates. And half of it was to go to the taxpayer. So, 55 goes to the person who will stay in and retire and 55 will go to us, the taxpayers, to get that $110 that we pay our substitutes.
Okay, any board members have any questions?
If my math is right, it's, if they have the 210 days, it's $11,550.
That's what I got.
Yep.
That's what I got.
A lot of them are not going to have it. Most take that.
What would be your percentage, you think?
Well, I don't know what percentage, but a lot of them don't have the total amount of days at the top.
I think the teacher retention rate for 30 years is very low to get full retirement.
I would also offer the work ethic isn't the same as it used to be. People take their leave each year, which is unfortunate.
Work ethic has changed everywhere.
We realize the value of the teacher being in the classroom as opposed to a substitute. We want the teacher in the classroom as much as we can.
And if a teacher has been teaching for 27 years, probably know what they're doing at that point. They've made it through all the evaluations and everything, so you're getting an experienced teacher for those last six years. So, what do you think? Versus a new teacher out of school that may or may not work out. Statistically, a sped teacher lasts three years in this country. So.
Is it safe?
Dire straits.
Sorry. Is it safe to assume that the revision dates just up the per D M amount?
We just did it last year.
I know, but the prior.
It was 40. Oh, I don't know what, in '83 and all of that.
What are neighboring counties doing?
I think a lot of them are tuned in at the top, the maximum amount you can accumulate for that many days.
As far as a per D M, do you know what they're doing?
Well, I know Gloucester. A person told me that who's going to retire in a couple of years, she told me, she just told me last week that she's retired from Gloucester, they pay $100 a day. That's what the person told me. But whether or not, you know, I haven't verified anything, I know that.
I know a retired teacher just recently from Richmond County and they pay $40 a day.
Like we used to tell them.
But at the end of the day, all of that added up, the total that Dave gave y'all doesn't add up to 60 grand as stated.
How much?
Sixty.
Y'all stated it could cost the county 60 grand.
It depends on how many teachers you have.
Depends on how many teachers we have.
In a cruel, I think.
Yeah, we just voted on the one, but.
Right, but I mean, if you've got 10 teachers.
You'd have to have five teachers that never missed a day and kept their 210.
That's, it's hard to define.
One to two at the most.
And that's been there 30 years and all the criteria matches.
We got one this year.
You got one teachers?
I think we got one, we'll probably get it this year.
All right, any other questions from the board? I think that it would, it would help our board when action is taken similar to this by the school board, that they'd be kind enough to let us know about it in a reasonable amount of time so we can have the facts.
Can you repeat that? I'm having trouble hearing you.
I was, I was saying that in the future, I would be hoping that the school board, when they made decisions like this, referring to money especially, they would, they would notify the board in a reasonable amount of time as to what they did. So, we would have the facts pretty much soon after you made your decision.
Have the facts before you said what you did?
No, have the facts in a reasonable amount of time, which, which would alleviate a lot of.
It was in our board docs for that March meeting. So, for everyone's awareness, after every school board meeting, usually the day immediately after, we release a press release on all action items. I can try to remember to forward that to Letcher so he can push it out to the supervisors. It's, it's a communication we do after every single meeting. So, that's something that you can look at and you'll, you'll know exactly what happened.
I like that idea.
So, we do it in addition to board docs.
Okay.
Yep.
That'd be good if you do that.
I would propose, then, if we're going to do that, to make sure that we release that press release to the board supervisors four or five hours prior to releasing the press release so that they got time, if they have questions, they see something, they can call us and maybe even a day, give you a day, so that they can call us and we can address any concerns that you all may have. I think that's really fair.
That would be good. That'd be good if y'all don't mind doing that.
Okay. Maybe the board should consider that. And the problem, the only thing I see as a concern, usually the public wants information as soon as possible after an official meeting. So, that is, you know, something that could be a concern because right now, they do receive it the morning after a meeting. If not, at the latest, usually, it would be in the afternoon. If not, at the latest, usually it would be in the afternoon. So I feel like our stakeholders may not understand that practice.
That would be a change because people are used to looking at that press release right away. You know? So that, that would be a major change for our constituents.
and I don't know how to, how to do this, but any increase in the budget, and I'm going to use this one example. Last year, the school board offered the bus drivers the health insurance. And I know y'all have to vote on it and approve it, just like we have to vote on and approve stuff. But that is a significant increase to the county. And it would help to have a heads up to the board to be able to prepare for such an increase like that. It's, it's kind of like, you know, once y'all vote on it and approve it, then we, it's, it's, we have to fund it or go against the grain and not fund it. But it would be nice if we could get a heads up when it comes to issues like that. And I know when it comes to specific individuals, we can't, we don't have the right to names and stuff like that. We don't want that. But when it, when it comes to a large dollar amount, I think it, it would help, would help us if we could get a heads up to where we could plan and we could meet on and have some discussions before it's actually implemented. Because suppose this was a sixty to a hundred thousand dollar increase in, you know, with y'all's budget, if it's being tight, then you would be back to say, hey, we need additional, and I'm just throwing this out there, a hundred thousand dollars or sixty thousand dollars to fund this retirement benefit, then that's another whole discussion that we would have to have. And I think it would help if we could get that communications established and, and work toward that goal.
All right, yeah. That would, that would really help us because we have to consider whether we have to raise taxes or not. And if we're not going to raise taxes, where we're going to get the money from, if we have any money set aside? You know, it makes it a little difficult.
So just for clarity, then, are we talking any additional funds outside the budget?
Outside the budget. All right. Any other questions, comments?
I guess that would lead way into what y'all are proposing to do for the school employees for the increase in the health insurance premium, the seven point two percent. At your last meeting, you discussed it for county employees, but that did not include school employees, is that correct?
Yep, it didn't. Well, we do it for our employees, you do it for your employees.
Right. But in essence, like Mr. Brand just said, anything we offer over and above would have to come to y'all. So here is the request that we would hope that y'all would do the same for school employees. As Mr. Brand said, it's hard to keep good employees. That's a benefit that they all have. If you don't do it, they're going to go somewhere else.
All right, well, I think that.
And that, and I'm sorry to cut you off, but that is another good example of what I was trying to message. I was trying to get across is.
Right.
Like this year before y'all, when you brought forth your budget, you knew it was going to be an insurance increase. And if you wanted to give teachers a salary increase, you already got it, that number right there.
Right.
And it's very helpful when we get those numbers. And anything additional to that is very helpful if we can get those numbers ahead of time.
And I think we averaged it at ten or twelve percent when we did the proposal. We did, and then we adjusted it back to seven point two percent. So.
You were, you were a little bit higher.
Yes, sir. And we just did it as a placeholder. Over the past five years because it fluctuates so much.
Yeah.
I mean, it's been high sixteen percent increase. But just for the record, we did revise it to seven point two percent. Yeah. And Mr. Tadlock is in receipt of that.
And we get, we get the same increases.
Right. We're on the same.
We have the same problem. We're estimating how much it's going to be. You estimated how much it's going to be. Then you, then when we, you sit down with Mary and I, and Mary sits down with the insurance company, then they give you a final rate. And we all know what the rate is then. But everything beginning is just estimate.
I know.
So you, you have the same rate we do.
I know. But I'm just saying, as far as covering the increase.
That would be up to you to cover.
Well, we did, we put it in the proposal. But at the end of the day, y'all can cut our budget. It's not, we propose a budget, y'all pass it. At the end of the day, you could actually cut our budget, so. That's why I'm just asking if you would take that in consideration, that you've already passed it for county employees. Take in consideration the school employees that have to, you know.
Yeah, well, we always try to look at the employees.
Pardon?
We always try to look at the employees.
Right, all employees.
We're not going to, we're not going to give our employees a six point seven uh rate and give you something less.
Okay.
Now, we wouldn't, we wouldn't do that. It would be the same across.
Well, I'm glad you said that because they were under the assumption after your last meeting that that was what you were going to do.
Oh, no.
Okay.
We're going to be, we're going to be the same thing across the board.
Okay. I appreciate it.
Why are we on insurance? Do y'all, does the school do anything different for the family plan than the county does? As far as, does the school pay a percentage of it?
I think we try to align with the county.
Right, I remember we, we had that last year, year before last, but I didn't know.
Mary's been great to work with, and we really want to be consistent because we want the benefit to be consistent for both. And it's the same three choice of county.
We want to be equal on both sides.
That's right.
So everybody gets the same thing.
Correct.
Because I, I don't want the school employee getting less than a county employee or vice versa. We want everybody to get the same.
I appreciate that.
All right, any other comments, questions, ladies? Or Jenson?
I've got one on the questions that we had answered in the end.
Which question?
And it's an easy one. It's on the first page. Question number one, and it's like the second sentence down. I'm not going to read it all. But um, the answer, the response back starts at, there was a lot of movement among categories and funds as we work to align expenditures. Okay, are you moving money from category to category?
No, we're moving expenditures. So some, we're not moving money unless we come to you and ask. The only thing we've asked for so far was that three hundred and forty-one dollars. But things were expensed. Let's say they were expensed to Essar and they shouldn't have been. You know, when it comes to our federal money, we have an application that has to be approved by the government. And in that application, we have to say we want X amount of dollars and this is how we plan on spending it. They have to approve that. And um, there was, there were situations where things were charged to Essar and they weren't in our plan, so we had to adjust.
Okay.
Within the category.
Within the category, okay.
All right. Excuse me. All right, any other questions, comments?
No, I'm good. I'm good, I'm sorry.
Mr. Fisher, you have anything? Mr. Long?
Break.
He said break.
Break.
No relief, man.
He's exhausted, I know.
Mr. Williams, you have anything?
I'm good.
All right. I, I don't have anything else, ladies. I appreciate y'all. Y'all have any other questions, comments, thoughts?
No, thank you for your support.
All right, you're very welcome. You're very welcome.
I'd like to file a motion that we go into a closed session with the board supervisors.
I'll second.
For what reason?
Personnel issues.
We don't have any personnel issues with either board. We don't have employees that are co-joined.
But we have people on the board that interact with each other.
Well, that's different. They're not, we, we're not employed. We have no employees with your school system. You have none with our county system.
That's the positionality.
Am I correct? Mr. Tadlock?
Yeah, I mean, we could certainly try and reach the county attorney to see if that's something that we could go into closed meeting regarding.
Yep.
Have you gone into closed session with other departments?
No, ma'am. Only, well, I'll take it back. Only if we have personnel issues or budget items that we cannot discuss in the public with that one agency of the county. You take treasurer's office, maybe something we need to discuss in there that cannot be discussed anywhere else. That would have to be discussed in closed meeting, as long as it meets the criteria of a closed meeting. We can't just go in because of personnel matter. We don't have any personnel matters with you. You have none with us.
Okay.
I would appreciate Mr. Tadlock if you would check with the attorney and to see if we can do that.
We have no problem with checking.
That's all I'm asking.
Yeah, that's fine.
Is he doing it now or?
I, I can check to see if I can catch.
You can check.
If he's available.
You can check, see if he's available. All right, I tell you what, while Mr. Tadlock's checking, we're going to take about a ten minute break, maybe fifteen. Long needs a break. I guess we all need a break. Give us a break, minute to walk around a little bit. Meeting back to order. Uh, Mr. Tadlock was able to get in touch with our county attorney. Our county attorney says that, to his knowledge, there is no way we can have a joint closed meeting. But we would advise you to contact your attorney, have your attorney contact ours, and see if there's some way for you will allow it. So that's all we can do at this time. Look, Mr. Tadlock, you want to comment any? Or did I cover it good?
No, I, I think that, that covered. I think it's just basically checking with the school board attorney to see if there's an allowable provision under um, the closed meeting code section. And if there is, then we can certainly follow up on that.
So he wasn't aware of it, but he has not had time to research it? So he doesn't know for sure, correct?
No, and, and he, without knowing the exact nature of the personnel matter, which um, I, I think is, is what he's trying to relay, that that's what needs to be discussed with the school board attorney to see if the personnel matter that you all would like to discuss is allowable for both boards to go into closed meeting regarding.
Does the code say it has to be a specific subject? It says personnel legal, but it doesn't say specific personnel, specific legal.
Yeah, it doesn't say a person. It says a personnel action. So for instance, we could have went into closed meeting. My understanding is, we could have went into closed meeting over the eleven thousand five hundred and fifty dollars that we appropriated for the teachers for their retirement. And that's not just a specific teacher, but it's a personnel action for all school employees.
Well, all I, all I and all luck will know at the time is that our attorney's not aware of any way we can do it right now. They'll have to research it a little bit, see what can be done. And I think time the two attorneys get together, they'll put their heads together. And if it's possible, yes, if not, we won't.
I just think there are times that the two boards probably would like to meet and discuss issues in private to see where um, the thought process is on any given decisions that are made and things that are happening within the individual districts. I try to be very upfront and forward with Mr. Williams on anything that I think is relevant coming. I think he'll verify that. I just want to have complete transparency between the two boards. And that's my motivation for making that motion.
Okay, well, all we can do is wait and see what, what the attorneys have to say.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it.
All right. Y'all have any other business you want to take care of?
No, sir.
Okay. All right.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn at seven-ten. Except nine and a half.
I don't even want my glasses to knock.
I know. It's nine and a half, it's close enough to it.
All right. All right, ladies, gentlemen. Thank you all for coming tonight. Pleasure to have you all here.
We can do it.
Yeah, we, we'll see.
We can do it.
All right, well, we still got more. We still got more work to do. We still got just as much. A whole lot of stuff to go through yet. We'll be here too, probably almost nine o'clock.
Don't forget, I'm not here tomorrow.
Thank you, Ms. Kristin.
We have a meeting tomorrow.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Ms. Booth. Dr. Wargill, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
How's that baby doing?
She's um, a little bit of a monster.
You ought to see that.
She's a pandemic puppy.
You ought to see that little baby I got now. She has got.
Is she a monster?
She's just as tall as this table is. And she's. Now get her by there for a long. All right. Take care of yourselves, sir. You take care. All right. We ready? Mr. Tadlock, you ready?
Yes, sir.
All right, I'll take the language we need to go into a closed meeting.
We need a motion that the Northumberland County Board of Supervisors convene an closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Freedom of Information Act, Section two point two, thirty-seven, eleven, A one, for the discussion and consideration of personnel matters and Section two point two, thirty-seven, eleven, eight, twenty-nine, discussion of the award of public contract involving the expenditures of public funds, including interviews of bidders or offers, and discussion of the terms or scope of such contract where discussion in open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. Invited to attend the closed meeting is necessary to the county administrator and assistant county administrators. They are deemed necessary and their presence will reasonably aid the board in consideration of the topics to be discussed pursuant to Virginia Four U, Section two point two, thirty-seven, twelve, F.
All right.
So moved.
So I got a motion, second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ladies, gentlemen, we are now in a closed meeting. Thank y'all for coming tonight. You're welcome to stay and come back in after the meeting. Huh?
This, sir, need a motion that the Northumberland Board of Supervisors return to public meeting as certified by roll call vote, that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and as were identified in the motion convening a closed meeting, were heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting.
All right, do I have a motion?
Motion, please.
Second.
Second.
All right, roll call vote. Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Long.
Aye.
Mr. Fisher.
Aye.
Mr. Brand.
Aye.
Mr. Andy votes aye. Uh, you need any action on anything?
I do not, no, sir.
All right, we, we need a motion to adjourn?
Yes, sir.
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank y'all for coming.
Tomorrow night.